Good.
Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, October 11th, 2017. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. So next, if we could all rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sharon, I'm going to have you read the first new hearing.
New hearing. Mashpee Commons LP requests minor modifications under special permit SP 8604024 to address actual build conditions, relocate certain square footage of building space in location of parking areas, in previously approved residential units as permitted on property located in a C1 zoning district at 38 Nathan Ellis Highway, Building 21, MAP 74, Parcel 20, Mashpee, Mass.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Thomas Feranti. I'm here on behalf of Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership, and we would like to respectfully withdraw this application. I submitted a letter to Mary Ann. I have a formal letter here withdrawing the application. We're just -- we're going to put this building on the shelf for a little while.
Okay. Scott, would you mind reading that letter in?
This is from Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership. October 11th, 2017, Mr. Jonathan Ferbus, Chairman, Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, 16 Grid Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Dear Jonathan and members of the board, please accept this letter from Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership as a formal withdrawal without prejudice of the application scheduled for the hearing on October 11th, 2017. The application was related to a new building within Mashpee Commons serving to satisfy condition five of the special permit. Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership would like to thank the board for their time and for their consideration of the application. We look forward to continuing to work with the zoning board of appeals. Please let me know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Thomas K. Feranti, Jr., Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership.
Okay. Scott, would you make a motion on this?
I make a motion that we accept the withdrawal of Mashpee Commons LP. Read the whole.
Sure.
Their request for a minor modification of the special permit, SP 8604024, to address actual bill conditions, relocate certain square footage of the building space and location of the parking areas, and previously approved residential units as permitted on property located in a C1 zoning district at 38 Nathan Ellis Highway, Building 21, MAP 74, Parcel 20, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Mary Ann? Nothing to sign, correct?
Nothing.
Want that stamped?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah. All right, Sharon, would you read the first and only other business?
Other business.
Actually, there's more than one.
There's more.
Go ahead.
Other business. Mashpee Commons, Representative Tom Feranti, to give the board their six-month update on the construction progress as stated in the comprehensive permit, condition eight of the decision and conditions issued February 2007.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Thomas Feranti. I am here on behalf of JWT 1A LLC and Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership. As stated, the conditions of our comprehensive permit for the 40B project require us to attend a ZBA hearing every six months. It's been a little over six months since the last one. I apologize for some scheduling constraints, but since my last visit here, which was earlier this year, at that time, we had this building finished, which was Building 41. There are eight one-bedroom units in this building and two affordable units. At that time, approximately, I think, six of the eight had rented. Since then, we finished Building 40 as well as Building 42. Now, in total of those three buildings, we have 22 units, and of those 22 units, we have five affordable units. All of the units are occupied, and it's a really, really nice demographic mix. We have retirees. We have young families with infants. We have couples living together. We have two single people sharing a two-bedroom. It's just a really, really nice mix that we have. It's kind of what we were hoping as we established this residential neighborhood, that you would get some more mixed demographics in there. In addition to the residential units in these three buildings, we also have commercial spaces in each of the three buildings. In Building 41, we have four commercial spaces, and all four of those spaces are leased. We have Kit-Kot Coffee in one. The North Bridge Facility has their sales office. There's an insurance agency, and Real Estate Associates relocated to that building. Building 42 has a commercial space. That's where Riddle is located. That's the escape room facility. Building 40 has a commercial space that's earmarked to be a restaurant. We do not have a tenant yet, so we have left that pretty bare bones on the inside. We don't want to start putting a whole bunch of plumbing in the ground until we know what the restaurant will be and what they want their layout to be. Recently, what we did, because we have the three buildings finished, we advanced the landscape plan, we finalized the landscape plan for the three buildings. Some of you that were involved in this process three, four years ago when we re-energized it, part of the requirement for our final letter of approval was to submit landscape plans. The landscape plan was included for all of Phase 1A, but what we did, because we have three of the eight buildings finished, we advanced that in a little bit more finite detail where we got into really what we wanted those buildings to look like. And so the three buildings that are finished, the landscaping was actually installed over the last couple of weeks. Now that the weather has allowed us to get in there, we have a little bit more left to do. We have some trees to put into the tree filter pits still to make those completely operational. Those have to be bare root planting, so you have to be a little bit more careful about when those are installed. The last time we were here, as I said, Building 41 was finished. We knew Building 40 and 42 were close to being finished. Building 42 was finished in March, and I think Building 40 was finished in May. And at the time, our plan was to continue up the west side of the street with Building 44 and Building 46. To refresh your memory, Building 44 has six units in it, two of which are dedicated affordable. Building 46 also has six units, one of which is to be affordable. The pricing came back on the buildings, and it just isn't feasible to advance those buildings at this point in time. Part of the issue that we run into is that with the 40B process, you have to establish all of your budgets for your financing on day one. Construction costs have changed drastically over the three and a half years since we established that, so the pricing has come back a little bit higher. So we are actually re-engaging our process to figure out, do we look at redesign? Do we look at delivery method? Do we look at our own process? How do we get those costs down to where they are more feasible? We have committed to building Building 44. So even though we won't be building both of the buildings, we will look at advancing Building 44. We are taking a really, really hard look at that building, at the design of the building, again, at the delivery method of the building, to really, really feel, to figure out how we can build these buildings at a more affordable cost to make them feasible. And one of the things that we've actually started looking at is whether or not it makes sense to start reallocating units to that building, to have more units in a footprint, to start amortizing some of that cost over more units. When you have six units of which two are affordable, it doesn't make the building perform very well, and the banks tend to frown upon things like that. So we're trying to figure out how to make the buildings a little bit better. Timing-wise, because of this, I can't answer when we're going to start it. We are in the design process right now. We're taking a step back and really looking at each one of the units, the number of bedrooms, how we're going to design it, what it'll all be. So my guess is that we won't see anything started this fall. It's our hope that maybe we can get it ready to start next spring. We have nine individuals that have gone through the first step of the affordability review. We won't have them, none of them have gone through the eligibility process with SEB. That's the monitoring, the lottery agent. They won't go through that process until we have a unit that's available, and that can either come through a re-leasing if someone moves out of an affordable unit, and that opens it up for one of the affordable individuals, or when we advance the next building, depending on how many affordable units in it, we'll advance the process with those individuals as well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
The nine affordables you're talking about?
The nine individuals.
Right. Okay. And that's for how many total affordables?
Well, the first sub-phase of the 40B that we advanced was permitted as 52 units with 13 affordable. We have five complete right now that are occupied. So if we built out the other five buildings, it would be another eight affordable units. The reason that they don't have us go through the really more thorough step with the individuals is because they may qualify today, and by the time the unit is available, things, it actually happened with somebody that we had lined up to move into an apartment, and it just took us a little bit longer to deliver the building, and by the time the unit was ready, they no longer qualified. And so we wait until we have units ready for them to go through that process.
So of the 13 affordables, what percentage of those are rentals versus sales?
They're all rental. Everything that we are building in Phase 1A is rental. So there's, one of the things that we've learned through this process in our dealings with the town planner is that all of the units that we're building in Phase 1A are actually, they count towards the town's requirement to meet the 10 percent. So even though only five of the units are affordable units, all 22 that we have built are, they qualify for the town's quota.
Right.
And they're all rental.
You were talking about the landscape.
Yes.
Any changes? Are you making any changes to the plan that was approved?
No. We have, we may have shifted some trees around, but the general theme of the...
Number of units of trees and that type of stuff remains the same?
Yeah. Yeah. I would be happy to put together a summary for the board if you would like. We can have our landscape architect call out any changes that were made, but it wasn't anything grossly different from what was part of the approved set of documents.
Okay. Last question I have.
Yes.
You said six of the units, in one of the buildings, you were having potentially six units, and it was not going to be feasible.
Both 44 and 46 have six units. Both of them came in well over budget.
Is the idea to make the units smaller and add more?
That's one of the, that's one of the things that we're looking at, is do we make them smaller to fit more units in there? It wouldn't change the overall total number of units. The 382 wouldn't change. The 52 wouldn't change. It's, we're looking at, we're looking at a reallocation of units. So if we end up taking this one from six units to eight units, or to 10 units, or to 12 units, we would find another building, and we would reduce the number of units in that building, or we would take a building that was earmarked for a multi-unit building and put a single-family home, or a town home, or something of that sort. But right now, really, everything is on the table for us to figure out how to make this work, because it's important for Buff to continue to build this complete neighborhood. And in order to build a complete neighborhood, you have to have residential, and we have to figure out a way to build the residential. And right now, we haven't figured out a way to build the residential that makes it financially feasible.
So you're talking about Buildings 40 and 42?
40 and 42 are done. The 40 has eight units. 42 has six units.
So which one are we talking about?
44 and/or 46. The last two buildings on the west side of the street.
Got it.
And certainly, if and when any of those changes are made, we would come back to the board, and we would review all of that with you.
Yeah, please. That's all I have.
I'm good.
Everything's great.
Affordable units, what are you meaning? Lower than the normal price?
So the five that are deeded affordable, it's the formula that's used, where they take the median income of Barnstable County, and then the 40B required, the 40B threshold, I believe it's 80 percent of the adjusted median income, and then out of that 80 percent, there's a certain percentage that you are allowed to spend on your rent, your housing expenses. And so they actually establish, the state establishes the rental rates for one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units, and those are deeded affordable forevermore. It's actually written into it. It's a legal requirement of a 40B project to have 25 percent of them be affordable. It's not necessarily low income, because the adjusted median income in Barnstable County is still somewhere around $70,000. So it's not, it's not, it's not low income.
I understand.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know from looking, looking from the outside, you're not supposed to be able to tell whether a unit is affordable or not.
Correct.
But once you go through that front door, you can, I assume you can tell.
Actually, you cannot. All of the units in the building were designed exactly the same way, and it was an interesting exercise. After we finished the first two buildings, we had a couple state representatives come take a tour, and I challenged them. I said, "When we go into the building today, I want you to tell me which one is the affordable unit." And they couldn't. They're all exactly the same. We did not make any difference whatsoever to the units themselves. It's the same floor, the same cabinets, the same counters, the same finishes, the same everything. You are allowed to do that under the 40B regulations to have the interior be different, but we did not.
Use lower-end appliances, that type of thing?
Yeah, you can have carpet instead of hardwood flooring. You can use plastic laminate countertops instead of granite, but we didn't. We chose to carry the finishes through all the way.
Okay. Scott, anything?
Once someone moves out of an affordable unit, does that unit always stay an affordable unit, or could you switch the unit?
It gets a little complicated. The only way you can switch an affordable to a non-affordable is if you end up having more affordable units than you started with. So we have five affordable units right now. If a market rate unit comes available, and somebody moves, and we can't find a market rate person to move into that, but there's an affordable person. We could theoretically rent that apartment, apartment to an affordable tenant.
Affordable and make one of the future affordable ones.
Then, when an affordable tenant vacates, we could then convert that one to...
Got you. As long as your number stays the same.
But you, it's 25 percent.
You have to keep that number.
Correct.
I just know we've heard these things before with other, more with homes, with people selling and leaving them. All of a sudden, it's not an affordable home anymore. I just want to make sure that's not the same with rental. It sounds like it's not. That was it.
Brett, any questions at all?
Are any of these units handicap accessible?
We do have the, this unit in Building 42, it's a two-bedroom unit on the first floor, and it is an accessible unit.
Are you required with the...
Five percent of the units have to be accessible units, so...
What about the affordable ones? Is there a requirement with the affordable ones?
You can have an affordable unit be an accessible unit. You don't have to.
Okay.
You don't have to allocate a certain percentage. It just has 5 percent of the units. So we have 22 units, only one of which is accessible right now, but that's because they look at the project as a whole. So they look at all eight buildings, all 52.
You're not required to have 25 percent of the affordable units.
Correct.
None of them have to be...
Correct. And you're not required to have 25 percent of every building and 5 percent of every building.
Just total number.
It's looking at the project. So we only have one out of 22 right now. By the time we get to the 52, we will have the required number of accessible units.
So when all is said and done, you have 382 units. There'll be 19?
If, yeah, that sounds right. Yeah. I'm too tired to do math right now.
Sorry.
It's pulling now. Very good, William.
I can tell you how many affordable units.
You could've said any number. I said, "Sounds right."
Sounds good. That is 5 percent.
Sharon, anything?
No. Too new at this.
Any questions or comments from anybody? Come right up if you would. And speaking, that mic is dead.
Yeah, we're at the one.
Bob Wildridge from the Disability Committee, Mashpee. Can you tell me what the features are in the accessible apartment?
Sure. It has ramp access on the south side of the building. It has stair access on the east side, and it has a ramp access on the south side. It has wider doorways. Rather than have stackable washer-dryers, it has side-by-side. It has wider doorways to get into the bathroom. It doesn't have tub-shower combos. It has accessible showers. All of the fixtures in the bathrooms were set at ADA-required heights, and the appliances in the kitchen were designed to be accessible. So there's, for example, there's a location for someone in a wheelchair to, there's an opening under the sink so they can wheel their wheelchair to the sink, and everything is right there for them.
Are there grab bars more than normal in like the shower areas?
There are grab bars in the showers and at the toilets, yeah. And I think that, I think there's something about the, I think the flusher on the toilet and the handles on the faucets and the handles on the doors are all different.
Ladder style.
But I'm not, I'm not an architect, so I don't know all the specifics, but those are the, those are the generalizations of what we did in that, in that unit.
Have a good turning radius in the bathrooms and kitchen?
Yeah. All of the buildings, when they're designed, they, and because that one was always earmarked as an accessible unit, it had all of the turning radii shown on the plan so that...
Those guidelines they had to follow.
Yeah. Yeah.
When we went through this, oh, I don't know, maybe it was six months ago, maybe, maybe longer, we talked about all of the units having some accessibility feature, you know, wider doorways and...
All, all? I'm not sure we ever discussed that or...
We had that, we had a long, long string of discussions with Doug, and when we came to one of these meetings, once before, I don't know, maybe it was six months ago, you said that you were going to follow through on...
I'm not sure we ever would have committed to building all 382 as accessible.
What does the state law say?
5 percent of the project.
Okay. Are you on target with the 5 percent?
Yeah. So with Building 44, right now, this building, the six units with the two affordable, it has, I believe, at least two accessible units. Building 44 brings us up to our thresholds for affordability and accessibility. Again, it's not per building. It's when you get to the...
I understand.
...of the project. So yes, we will be there when we finish the project. We are not there right now because we are in process.
Okay. I think we need to go back and check the minutes of that last meeting on that, when we talked about...
You didn't do that in this meeting, did you?
Pardon?
The ZBA meeting?
Was that in a ZBA meeting?
ZBA meeting.
He was here a long time ago.
I gave you...
I don't remember talking about...
I don't remember.
I gave you a stack of emails.
It's not even physically possible to make all the units accessible.
I gave you a stack of emails between, that we had with Doug Storrs.
Oh, you're talking, how many years ago?
Doug's been in town for five years.
That was about six or eight years ago, but I...
Anyway.
I gave you these, these emails that what he had said that they were going to do on, on these expansions. And when we talked about it at a meeting within the last year, I think that it came up and...
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall. Does anybody recall this conversation at zoning?
He'd be appearing before us, but he's, he's in, under the state compliance, so you don't have a...
I'm not arguing about the state compliance. I'm just questioning the commitments that Mashpee Commons had made, what they were, what they were going to do.
I don't, I don't remember.
I don't recall that.
I mean, I don't know how you'd find that, but I don't remember it.
You go back and check your files for the, the email exchanges.
I'm not sure we'd have that, would we?
I can look at the minutes if you like.
I'm not sure we would have committed to something like that. We always commit to doing what we are required to do.
Yeah. I would've remembered you saying, "Yeah, we're going to do every minute."
Yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, these buildings, it's, again, it's not even physically possible.
Maybe Mary Ann can find the minutes and, maybe Mary Ann can find the minutes and check that out.
And find the...
If you have anything, any commitment in writing, certainly let us know.
If you have the date, that'd be great, what that meeting was.
I'll get you another set, but you have it. You have had it.
Okay. Sir, come right up. And for the record, your name and address?
I'm Berkeley Johnson. I'm from the Affordable Housing Committee. The two people who know what's going on here are at a Housing, HAC convention, seminar business. We've been to the apartments that are finished, and they are very well done. I would say that there is a benefit for the ones that are full market rate. They have, in my recollection, more windows than the ones that are not, but they're roughly the same size, the same equipment, the same everything. So that's good. Our principle concerns we don't lose any affordable units as things go, but our chairman and also our former chairman, Bud Abbott, are in close touch with Mashpee Commons, as I think our gentleman will say, and we keep in close touch. And I'll have to go to them about which of these buildings have been drawn back and which are going forward and so on. But so far as we know, everything's fine.
It's good to hear.
I'd like to see them built, but that's it. But the units are very, very nice. Whether $1,165 a month is an affordable housing rate is...
I believe that, yeah, I think the state, they set that rate, do they?
I was involved with Habitat for a long time. We operated at a much lower level, which was really about 60 percent of 80 percent for our housing, and that was not rental. That was all ownership. But we need rental housing. We're certainly in favor of getting as many affordable rental units as we can get, and...
I agree.
Hopefully, the economy will keep improving. But thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words. And yes, Mr. Chase, the managing general partner of Mashpee Commons, has met with Mr. Abbott and a couple other members of the Affordable Housing Committee. It's interesting, we all want to build faster, and that's part of the issue that we run into with 40B, is it just doesn't allow for an expedited pace of construction. I mean, for those of you that have sat on this board for four years, you remember the volumes of paperwork that we would submit to you guys throughout all of those meetings, and I think you got tired of seeing us. We were here so often. So we would, we would love to figure out a way to expedite the process and build things faster. That is absolutely something that we are interested in. A more predictable path forward, yes.
Well, I think we all realize here, and everybody realizes, that you need to make a profit. And I understand if six doesn't work, then you need to figure something else out, because I don't think anybody's denying you the fact that Mashpee Commons needs to make a profit, or they don't make a profit, they're out of business.
Well, I mean, not only that, but you know, for the entire duration of Mashpee Commons, it's basically been self-funded. You know, it's all been the Chase family that has built Mashpee Commons. And yes, Buff wants to build a complete neighborhood, and it is important to have residential, but he does have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure the company remains solvent. So we would like to get to a place where we can go out and start finding outside sources of capital to help with this process, but it's a challenge with 40B, to say the least.
Any other final questions, comments, anyone?
It's really not relevant, but did you guys ever determine if stick building or modular was a better way to go? I know that you tried them both. I'm just curious.
We did. We did. It's an ongoing exercise. It, the three buildings that we have built, the savings in the time, in the cost that we anticipated with modular construction did not flush out that way.
I'm also wondering, what have you found after they're done? Are you having any issues with the modular homes, that you've had to do any repairs that you didn't expect?
No, not with the, not with the modular buildings themselves. We've had some issues with the HVAC system in the building, but that's somewhat independent of modular that...
I was just curious how...
But we are continuing to explore modular, and actually, Building 44, as we get into this process, we are still looking at that one as a modular building. And one of the things that we think happened was not only did we use modular for the first time, but we also served as the general contractor for the first time. So we had growing pains ourself while we figured out really how to do this, as well as figuring out how to work with the modular. So we're going to, we're going to try it again and perhaps remove ourselves from, from the equation.
I have...
No, thank you. No, thank you.
I have one other recollection from one of the previous meetings, it may be a long, long time ago, I lose track of time, but-
There have been many.
There was an issue with gas.
Yes.
Could you go?
That has been resolved. At the time, when we were beginning the design of these buildings, the state issued a moratorium on natural gas.
Three years ago.
It was, and so, building forty and forty-two were actually already in design at that point in time, so we had to remove natural gas out of those buildings completely. So, these two buildings are all electric. We did, because the moratorium was removed while we were in process, we were able to bring gas to this building that will be available for the commercial space, but building forty-two, even the commercial space is all electric. Building forty-one was a little bit farther behind from a design standpoint, so we did include natural gas in that building, and the others going up the street, it looks like those will have gas as well. National Grid came in and installed all the infrastructure in the roadway, so we have natural gas available for all these buildings now.
Would you retrofit the one that's all electric?
Probably not, from a cost standpoint, it's really not practical to do that.
If it's on a slab, it'd be really hard to do.
Well, you'd have to take out all, all of the equipment that was put in is electric.
All the appliances, you'd have to replace everything.
Well, the appliances would still be electric, but it's really the HVAC system, it's an all-electric system, it was designed specifically because we didn't have natural gas, so we'd have to completely scrap that and bring in something new.
Cost prohibitive.
Remember, wasn't there a discussion of maybe doing the HVAC using propane as a-
He actually never looked at that as an option, simply because of some of the constraints that were happening in town at the same time, where other people were looking at propane. We may have discussed it very, very briefly, but just, we eliminated it pretty quickly, yeah.
That was just a point of interest.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, it's interesting when you bring up things like that, I had kind of forgotten about the moratorium, it was so long ago, but if there's no other, there's just one thing I want to mention that's slightly off-topic here, but I'm sure all of you have read in the newspaper about our public engagement process that we're going through as we master plan the rest of our, the rest of our land. We have our first visioning session scheduled, it's a public meeting, it's October twenty-fourth from six to eight PM, it's at the library. We would love it if any of you would like to attend, again, we're really trying to get input from, from the people in Mashpee, from the residents, from the boards, the committees, everybody. Come help us figure out what the long-term vision should be for Mashpee Commons, so hopefully, we'll see you there. If not that one, we have another one at the library in December, and then we'll be at a planning board hearing for a third visioning session, I think, December sixth, so. So, there will be multiple opportunities for people to come and-
Are you going, are you going to announce that in the paper?
It's in the paper, yeah, we have a, we have a website up, we announced it at the planning board meeting, it's been in the newspaper, so we just want to make sure that you all are aware of this, and that, you know, we extended the invitation to the ZBA. We haven't, we haven't come to you yet, but we want to make sure that you-
What time is it?
Six to eight PM at the library.
That's the vision of Mashpee Commons going forward?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a-
So, it's Tuesday night, two weeks from yesterday?
Yes, yes, it's a Tuesday evening. We tried to do it where it had the fewest number of conflicts with other things in town. It's impossible to do it with no conflicts, but that night seemed to be an okay one.
Very good.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll see you in six months.
Yes, you will.
Or thereabouts.
All right, Sharon, would you read the next other business?
We are to approve the two thousand eighteen year ZBA public hearing schedule.
Hey, would you like to make a motion? Scott?
Something for me to-
I make a motion that we approve?
Make a motion that we approve the two thousand eighteen year public hearing dates.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sharon.
Okay, we have to approve the September twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen meeting minutes.
Make a motion?
I think that was a motion.
That's a motion, isn't it?
That is a motion, oh, okay.
Perfect. We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dom, it's time, Dom.
I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
Seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night.